I would now like to call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. Carrie, can we have a roll call, please?
I'm Andy Duran.
Present.
Anne Hill.
Present.
Carrie Steyman, present.
Tim Pennage.
Present.
Lauren Hirsch.
Present.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Present.
And Laura Brinkstone.
Present.
We are all present, so we can begin. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 One nation, underground, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm going to turn it over to Anne Hill, our Vice President, for the reading of the mission, vision, and values for Lake Bluff School District 65.
Thank you. Our mission and vision: to provide each student with quality instruction, learning opportunities, and educational environments that inspire academic achievement, personal growth, and responsible citizenship. Excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
Thank you, Anne, and exciting that, starting next meeting, we'll have a new mission, vision to read once we approve the strategic plan, so, awesome. Move on to item number four, which is our recognition. Do you want to tee this up before we get started?
Yes, so every year at this time, we have some really special staff members that we recognize, those who've been here for many years, and tonight, we are recognizing four of those folks which are in the room, and I am going to start with Ms. Kelly Bay, who will come up and present Jeremy Salarick. Jeremy, you want to come up? The resolution, oh, sorry. Andy was going to read it. But you're welcome to say a few words and then read it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am beyond honored to acknowledge Jeremy Salarick tonight. It's hard to capture all the things that Jeremy means to our building, to the staff, to the students, but I know that we've got a lot to share, so I'm going to try to keep it brief. Jeremy, you lead the school with energy and enthusiasm. You have found a way to keep the spirit and tradition in so many events, and we are really lucky to have you. Events like our Jump for Heart Challenge, or the Kids' Heart Challenge, formerly Jump Rope for Heart, this is the energy behind it. We could not execute that day without Jeremy's help, support, and drive. Our upcoming Field Day, she is our Field Day rock star. She is the one brainstorming ideas. Yes, she has teammates. They do a lot of hard work and heavy lifting, but Jeremy has been sort of a force through and through, and a strong piece behind all of that work. She cares about kids, she has ideas, she's organized, she's an early-arriver. She wants to make sure that we have a plan, that we're executing it, and that we can get all of our boxes checked so that we're ready to go, and that means a lot to me, and that means a lot to our staff. So I will read our resolution. A resolution honoring the service of Jeremy Salarick. Whereas Jeremy Salarick, after serving over 22 years in education at Lake Bluff School District, has decided to retire. And whereas it is the desire of the Board of Education, on behalf of its members, its faculty, and the community, to extend its sincere appreciation for her loyalty to this school district, and whereas she has dedicated herself to the leadership of the students and faculty of Lake Bluff School District 65 for over 22 years, demonstrating sound judgment and caring compassion for each of her students and peers. And whereas during her many years of service, she has demonstrated her willingness to cooperate with fellow administrators, teachers, and staff to assist the many students who have come to the district and departed during her tenure in Lake Bluff. Therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Education, District 65, Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois, that there be extended to Jeremy Salarick its appreciation for her contribution to the students of the school district, as well as its earnest desire that she may have many years of contented retirement. Dated this 23rd day of May 2023 at Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois.
I just want to thank everyone for all the support I've gotten, from staff, from the school board, and, but most of all, just the wonderful kids that we have here in our district. And I see many of my students this year in the audience, and I just love all of you so much.
Go Badgers!
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to bring up Tracy Rorick to recognize this Nancy Goldberg.
Nancy's prepared a 10-minute speech for you. Well, I am just thrilled to be up here to talk about Nancy, because I know she won't brag about herself. When I came into this role, Nancy was really my right-hand person. I could not do this job without her. She is there bright and early every morning, and she's there working all day long. Nancy has not only served in this role as an administrative assistant, but she's also worked in the district for a number of years, working in the middle school library, working as a substitute teacher. The list goes on and on of the different tasks-
Yeah, the different tasks that you've done in the district.
She's a parent in the district, a grandparent in the district, just a lifelong resident of Lake Bluff, so. We appreciate you, Nancy.
Thank you.
So, a resolution honoring the service of Nancy Goldberg. Whereas Nancy Goldberg, after serving over 16 years in education support at Lake Bluff School District, has decided to retire. And whereas it is the desire of this Board of Education, on behalf of its members, its faculty, and the community, to extend its sincere appreciation for her loyalty to this school district. And whereas she has dedicated herself to the support of the children and faculty of Lake Bluff School District 65 for over 16 years, demonstrating sound judgment and care for every student and staff member. And whereas during her many years of service, she has demonstrated her willingness to cooperate with fellow administrators, teachers, and staff, and to assist the many students and teachers who have come to the district and departed during her tenure in Lake Bluff. Therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Education, District 65, Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois, that there be extended to Nancy Goldberg its appreciation for her contribution to the students and staff of the school district, as well as its earnest desire that she may have many years of contented retirement. Dated this 23rd day of May 2023 at Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois.
Speech will be about 10 seconds. I too just want to thank you all for letting me be a part of this district. We moved here in '88, and I sent six kids through, and now my grandchildren are here, which it's just really been a blessing to me. I've enjoyed it, but it's time. It's time for me to fly, maybe sub, but-
I was going to say, substitute teaching is-
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to keep my hands in it if I can, but thank you all for allowing me to be a part of the district for this amount of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Jay to recognize Steve Miller.
I'll try not to cry. Steve doesn't like attention, but I'm going to embarrass him a little bit. So Steve is passionate about providing a safe, comfortable, clean facilities for the students, staff, and community. He knows the buildings inside and out, and he's played an important role. He played an important role in designing our elementary school, I'm sorry, our middle school renovation, and actually was involved probably in the elementary school renovation as well. He's been here a long time. You know, when things happen, when the air conditioning went out at LBEs a few years ago, Steve devised a way to cool the building at night with outside air and strategically-placed fans. He's frugal with his budget and stretches it by researching what he buys and looking for the best value. He's gradually converting our school's lighting to LED to reduce energy costs, and he beautifies our buildings by saving and reusing plants and bringing in plants of his own, which you may have noticed around the buildings. Steve provides leadership to and supervises a team of six, as well as overseeing the night crew. He utilizes their skills and by properly equipping them, has saved the district thousands of dollars by doing lots of work in-house versus contracting it out. He's responsible for all building setups and making sure our crossings are safe. He was also involved in setting up and maintaining our recycling and compost programs. He always received compliments during life safety inspections for doing a great job keeping our buildings safe and in compliance, and he's the guy who gets woken up in the middle of the night by building alarms, and the guy who comes in before dawn on weekends to clear snow. So it is not a glamorous job, but it is vitally important and one of those jobs that usually only gets noticed when something is wrong or is missed. So I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank Steve, because he has made my job much easier, knowing that he's on top of everything, and the board and the administration want to publicly recognize Steve with this resolution to show our appreciation for all that we know he does for District 65, and even more for all the things that people don't know about. A resolution honoring the service of Stephen J. Miller. Whereas Stephen Miller, after serving over 21 years in education at the Lake Bluff School District, has decided to retire. And whereas it is the desire of the Board of Education, on behalf of its members and faculty and the community, to extend its sincere appreciation for his loyalty to the school district. And whereas he has dedicated himself to the support of students and faculty of Lake Bluff School District 65 for over 21 years, demonstrating sound judgment and planning for each of our facilities. And whereas during his many years of service, he has demonstrated his willingness to cooperate with fellow administrators, teachers, and staff, and to assist the many students and teachers who have come to the district and departed during his tenure in Lake Bluff. Therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Education, District 65, Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois, that there be extended to Stephen Miller its appreciation for his contribution to the students of the school district, as well as its earnest desire that he may have many years of contented retirement. Dated this 23rd day of May 2023 at Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois.
Interesting in time of life right now. Keep it short. Reflecting and wondering what you contributed. And by being involved with the school district, it changed my life in a positive way. One of the first things I thought of during earlier conversations was the fact that education and the fact that my education continued and grew as I spent the last 21 years here, at a number of different levels, not only on a mechanical management level, but watching the educational process, watching children grow up, not having children myself. Started out, my first five years in the trenches, I did crossing guard duty, which gave me a whole new humbling appreciation for being out in the community and being responsible for the children. I took it real seriously, and I tried to instill that in the men, and they embrace that as well. I, it's been, the last 20 years have been really productive, I mean seriously productive, from where the school district was when I arrived here and where it is now. I don't know if you have any idea, but it's huge from a facility standpoint. Always a great level of energy and dedication in the teaching staff, but just overall, the growth and everybody embracing it and the children experiencing it, I think it's a great accomplishment for you and for the community. And also, I want you to know how much I've appreciated the benefits of working for the school district. I was self-employed for 23 years, did a lot of things, and I was a lousy boss as far as benefits, and you folks have been great. You've acknowledged myself and the staff, compensate us generously, and I just want you to realize it really is appreciated, where nowadays, I don't think a lot of people appreciate their jobs and their employers. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Ms. Kelly Bay for introducing Jill Weinberger. We need the resolution. So sorry, should have had it prepared. Does anyone have any tissues? I should have planned ahead with that. We have a tissue shortage in our building. Carrie's for parents' parents.
Oh, look at-
That looks like the one in my car!
Lots of feet have stepped on the box, but these are clean.
I'm not going to be able to look at you, but I'm going to share a story about Jill that even Jill's not aware of, and this is about you, the story's more about me. When I stepped into the role as principal three years ago, there were a few people I was a little nervous about. And how they, like, would welcome the things I said, and am I going to have to have some hard conversations? Or Jill can have a rough edge, but she is soft and heart and gooey and loving, and I think that is why our students form the connections that they form. Jill was one of the first people in that very hard pandemic year to consistently come and support and acknowledge, this is hard, and you're doing a great job, and that is not the only thing that I needed to hear, but it really stopped me in my tracks and demonstrated the strong character that she has and how much she is an educator through and through. I have been lucky to have Jill, and this isn't about me, this is about all of the students that have crossed the threshold of her door, all of the staff members that she's, that have had the privilege of being a teammate with her. She is a taskmaster, she is a problem solver, she is a thinker, she is a teammate, she is a strong support system to anyone that comes in contact with her, and I am so beyond grateful to have been able to be in the presence of her and to be a leader alongside her. So, the resolution honoring the service of Jill Weinberger. Whereas Jill Weinberger, after serving over 33 and a half years in education in Lake Bluff School District, has decided to retire. And whereas it is the desire of this Board of Education, on behalf of its members, its faculty, and the community, to extend its sincere appreciation for her loyalty to this school district. And whereas she has dedicated herself to the support of the students and faculty of Lake Bluff School District 65 for over 33 years, demonstrating sound judgment and caring compassion for each of her students and peers. And whereas during her many years of service, she has demonstrated her willingness to cooperate with fellow administrators, teachers, and staff, and to assist the many students who have come to the district and departed during her tenure in Lake Bluff. Therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Education, District 65, Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois, that there be extended to Jill Weinberger its appreciation for her contributions to the students of the school district, as well as its earnest desire that she have many years of contented retirement. Dated this 23rd day of May 2023 at Lake Bluff, Lake County, Illinois. Congratulations.
No, this makes it reality, which is really difficult, because I'm not ready for this date. Board has been absolutely amazing, admin, teachers, parents, students. I never expected, when I started in January of 90, to have a second family, a second home. I am so grateful to everything the board has offered through all the years, the support that admin, no matter what it is, has been there, the teachers, we truly are a family, and I'm devastated to be missing it, and that's why I'll be back in the fall. So thank you for everything you, everything. Thank you.
I just want to personally thank all four of you. When I got here, it was July of 2020, and it's pretty hard to imagine how things changed immediately, but when I think about what it was like for Jeremy teaching PE remotely, or, you know, even changing jobs and taking on additional responsibilities when we couldn't do PE because we didn't have the space, Jill and the rest of our classroom teachers changing furniture, teaching some kids remotely, some kids in person, right? Having that hybrid situation, changing resources, being flexible and adaptable. Nancy in the front office helping us with all the transportations and three shifts in person, three different times that we brought people in person that first year, and Steve, our facilities, I mean, we wouldn't have been able to do it. We would not have been able to bring kids in that first day without you. So I'd just like to personally express my gratitude for just the last three years, alone of your dedication to our students and families and communities, it made a huge difference, and we're going to miss you a lot. We will be, as a staff, recognizing our retirees on the last day of school on our half-day. We have a committee of folks that are planning a really big celebration, and we can't wait to recognize and celebrate with the rest of our staff. So thank you so much for coming tonight, and thank you, family and friends who are here, for letting us have them for these years, because they've been amazing.
All right, thank you. So move on to item five, which is public comment.
They might not want to stay.
Oh, yeah, by the way, if you, if your part's done, you want to leave, you can feel free to do that. You're, of course, welcome to stay as long as you'd like.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right, we didn't shrink by that much. At every Board of Education meeting, we offer two options for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one towards the end. If there's anyone in the audience tonight who would like to address the Board of the public comment, you may feel free to identify yourself and approach the podium. Not seeing anybody in the room, anybody remotely? Okay, we'll have another opportunity at the end, then. So we will move on to item six, which is a quick one. It's the addition of a discussion item. At each board meeting, we offer the opportunity for board members to suggest a discussion item for a future agenda. Does any board member have anything to suggest for future agenda tonight? Move right along to item seven, which is our report section. We're going to flip this around a little bit so that we can get the students and families up first, so our first one, I'll call Mrs. Bay back up to talk about student presentation, kid-to-kid.
All right, good evening, everyone. The morning of Friday, May 12th, at Lake Bluff Elementary School this year was an energizing one. We have a new tradition called kid-to-kid, and it is a magical experience, and so it felt really fitting that we have fifth graders here tonight to share a little bit about that experience. So we have set up a bit of a Q&amp;A-type session. So I'm going to ask a question, and our fifth graders are going to share their name and their answer. So, my first question.
My name is Lauren, and my teacher is Ms. Plapp.
All right, so Lauren, we are wondering, what is kid-to-kid?
Kid-to-kid is a possibility for little kids to learn new things and for fifth graders to experience how to teach and how to plan lessons. Fifth graders get to visit different classrooms and teach new things.
What are, oh, first, all right, can you introduce yourself?
My name is Anderson, my teacher is Mrs. Lennox.
Anderson, what are the best things about kid-to-kid?
The best things about kid-to-kid are students at LBEs get to learn new skills that aren't always taught in school. It's a chance to learn something new, and it's a chance to teach about your passion.
My name is Maya, and I'm from Mrs. Plapp's class.
Maya, tell us, why is kid-to-kid fun?
Students get to teach and learn things that are fun and entertaining. The fifth graders get to see what it's like to teach, and they get to see the teacher's perspective. Kids also get to collaborate and show off what they learned. Fifth graders will also get to learn about their classmates.
Thanks, Maya.
Hi, my name is Harper, and my teacher is Mr. Nillis.
Harper, how does kid-to-kid work when it comes to collaboration? Are there benefits?
There are. Kids get to work with one another and collaborate with one another by sharing projects and working together to build or make or play a game, and, yeah.
Hi, my name is Tal, I'm from Mrs. Sheridan's class.
Tal, can you describe the process for planning and preparation?
Well, first, we have to decide on a topic. Then we fill out a sheet for the different materials we will require. Third, we create a lesson plan. It includes how long the lesson is, what you'd like to say, and what you'll do. You also need to plan for how long every section of the lesson it will take. The fourth step is to prepare materials. The fifth step is to rehearse and practice, and the sixth step is to present on the day of.
My name is Ben, and my teacher is Mr. Nillis.
Ben, what are the possibilities for learning? What does the fifth-grade teacher learn through this experience?
So we learn how to plan and collaborate with others. We learn how to teach a class in what teachers go through every day. We learn what it's like to be in the teacher's shoes, and we were reminded what it's like to be in kindergarten through fourth grade again.
Hi, my name is Ethan, and my teacher is Mrs. Lennox.
Ethan, what are the possibilities for learning for the students in this experience?
They learn different tasks, hobbies, crafts, passions, and how to do different things.
All right, and the biggest thing that you might be wondering, what are the range of topics and what is taught during kid-to-kid? So we'll have each person come up and share what they taught younger learners about.
I taught all about instruments and band.
We taught country flags, and we taught them how to identify country flags.
I taught beaded bracelets. I taught how to make beaded bracelets.
I taught how to make a paper hermit crab.
Me and my partner Will, who is unfortunately not here today, taught how to drum.
Me and my friend Ethan taught all about volcanoes.
All right, thank you, fifth graders. Questions, are there any questions from the board?
Any questions?
Oh, don't leave me hanging, you got to help me with these questions. So overall- Do you guys think this is a valuable experience that should continue at LBEs?
Yes, a lot.
Fantastic.
Did any of you get nervous, being up in front of the younger kids? Yeah?
Were they good listeners?
What do you think was the hardest part about getting up in front of the younger students? Anyone want to say more? Come on up.
Probably trying to make them pay attention.
I think there is a teaching moment with the classroom teachers to tell, what is the quiet signal in the classroom? And so it was really neat to walk in and see fifth graders giving those quiet signals. Harper, do you want to add on?
So I wasn't actually here on kid-to-kid day. That was sad, but I actually got to teach my fifth-grade class, and I saw the difference between the listening with the fifth graders and the listening with the third graders. It wasn't that much of a difference.
Does that mean we have really good third graders, Harper? Any other questions for our students? I should say, thanks for coming up here. It's not easy to be in front of second, third graders, but it's not easy to be up in here at a board meeting either, so thanks for doing that and thanks for sharing it with us, appreciate it.
Well done. It was a great day.
And you all and your parents are also welcome to stay for the whole meeting, if you'd like. You're also welcome to leave, so-
Is it okay to do a quick photo? Yes, please.
Sure, please, yeah. Should we?
You want to send it? Yeah.
Do you want to send it?
Send it? I'll just bunny ears to all of you. We're not in it? We'll get out of the way. Oh, they want us in it? We're getting in it or no? Get in.
Really bad idea.
I'm at my tippiness of toes.
Now we're not in. Now, we're not in.
All right, thank you.
We all had a hard time.
Thank you, moms and dads, too.
Oh, man. Thanks, everyone. You're the creeper?
Thanks.
My kids never get asked to present. Is it in a?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe they don't want to. I actually don't know how. I'd be crying. Oh, man. Nobody's hat.
I thought maybe there were a couple struggling. Nicole, I know you won't take this personally, but you're next.
There's a hat, too.
They've already left.
All right, underneath the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is, I would say, not 100% of an update of the year, but it's a good overview. You know, we had a lot of accomplishments this year, a lot of activity, a lot of figuring out how to resume to normal after the post pandemic and a delay in a lot of activities. I think we were back in full force and then some this year. So, I think there was a lot of great accomplishments and teamwork. Couldn't have been done without Megan Hadler, Allison Perry. Some other big hitters were Ray Dobash and Melissa Wusso and Lauren Armstrong and Kristy Denick, so many more. But the bolus of activity occurred because of those individuals. We accomplished, I know there was a pool event previously. We brought it back with the Splash Bash, the Pumpkin Bash replaced, the Pumpkin Fest, the Pumpkin Chase, the Project Full Service Event, new record there. Teacher and staff holiday giving was extra generous. Thanks to everyone. Thanks to Lauren and Alex. Teacher and staff appreciation throughout the year, grade level socials in every grade. The Fill-A-Hart for Kids service activity, we're going to do that also at the middle school next year. That was really great. Over $7,000 raised for Fill-A-Hart for Kids. The curriculum enhancement activities resumed. We're going to build on that for next year. The book fairs actually just concluded this week and eighth grade promotion is in full force as well. So, that's just a big, a little snapshot. I should also mention recycling and compost was another big achievement, thanks to Mary Hogan. So, in terms of operational updates, we got the bylaws approved and in use. We're going to be issuing an annual report by next week's final PTO meeting. That's going to present a great visual, so I will share that back with the board as well. It's just not quite ready for tonight. Our new tool, Membership Toolkit, is really helping to create operational efficiencies, the ability to pay online for all events and create financial snapshots, better budgeting, communication, et cetera. So, that's been a real benefit to the organization. We implemented a fundraising chair and that's going to continue to grow from that program perspective. You know, it was a great idea of some of the team to get a jump on next year and use an interactive calendar with the district and the school events. So, now that we have a more stable state of events, we're able to better plan for the next year. And there's a lot of great communication with Nathan Kelly and all of the district administrators. And we moved the storage unit. Let me tell you, that was fun. So, that, those are kind of some of the highlights of those activities. We have, as you all very well know, the Fox Den is looking beautiful. It's really great to see the benefits of that and, you know, seeing the kids use it some this spring. And I just got hot off the presses. I don't know if we will do it as soon as 6/8, but they're ready to go as soon as 6/8. So, we'd love to get it in in the beginning of the summer so the community can use it, but we're having a meeting actually tomorrow to meet with the village engineer and, yeah, let's get it in. So, those were two big events. In terms of what this looks financially, it was a little expensive. So, we have like routine operating expenses, you know, the boring stuff that equated to about $3,900. Our fundraising, we implemented some new ideas with buffer events and targeted percentage of sales back, brought in about $22,000. That includes yearbook, so there's a good bolus of out of expenses with the yearbook as well. In terms of sponsorship, we brought in almost $17,000 and some of it is actually a little bit buried in the Pumpkin Chase as well, but it was a little bit too hard to parcel out. So, the events of the Pumpkin Bash, Pumpkin Chase, the Splash Bash, which is a start of the year event and the book fair, brought in almost $36,000 and about $20,000 of expenses. The eighth grade promotion, those numbers are a bit skewed because everything is ongoing and very active right now, so we're going to have a lot more expenses there. Our social events are those grade events that we had at every level and basically we implemented a model where we asked for small donations to help kind of self-fund those. We had the, basically, a cost neutral for teacher and staff, what we got in, we wanted to give out. There was a little cost associated, so that's absolutely zero, for starting up our savings account. And then, the other things are the service projects. So, these are just outright expenses and things that we want to do to promote the community and the organization. So, that was your Project Full and paying for pizzas for the food drive, the reading program, the teacher and staff appreciation events, curriculum enhancement, and paying for the T-shirts that the kids get at the beginning of the year. And then, we have just the overhead of the transaction fees of the Membership Toolkit of being able to pay online. So, what that looks like in total is about, you know, a net profit still of 30, roughly $32,000 for the year. So, good. Our capital expenses, we came in with the intention of trying to spend some money. So, we started off the year with almost 250, well, 255,000. For a nonprofit, you know, we made a conscious decision that that's just too big of a bank balance to carry and we wanted to positively contribute back to the community so that we, as you well are aware, we chose the Fox Den and the Sport Court. To date, that's $132,000 in spend. We still have about 50-ish for the Sport Court. So, in the end of the day, when you take a look at all of that, we'll be still at about $100,000 in our bank account, which is really healthy and provides a good cushion for continued PTO expenses and things, you know, for years to come. So, you know, I think that's just a, it's a very high level, but wanted to give you guys a little bit transparency as to everything that occurred and the expenses and the revenues that came with it. And I should also mention, I still don't have a replacement, so if anybody knows of anybody who might want to take my role, that'd be great. We have some people that we're working on, but all the other spots are pretty much full, but I don't know what we're going to do because I think I'm done. So, I will appropriately transition everything this year, but it's been a joy. It's been, this organization is amazing, so thank you for the opportunities.
Nicole, you've done an amazing job. You have to take them for coffee. Nicole, remember, I took you for coffee and that's how you do it. And I took you for coffee. I know.
And look what happened next.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Nicole.
But great job. Thank you for everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. You've done an amazing job for the last couple of years. Thank you. Hard shoes to fill.
Yeah. Thanks, Nicole.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Our next report is from Tracy Ruck, our Director of Student Services.
I should be connecting, I think, to the Zoom. Okay, so then I should be able to share screen, right? All right. I am really excited to share with you about the Wellness Fair that occurred on May 5th. This was a first for me to put an event together of this, I guess, magnitude. So, the idea behind the Wellness Fair was that it would be held on an institute day so that all of our staff members could be invited. So, even our staff members who were not there that day were invited. They could come in and participate, such as our teaching assistants and office staff members. When we thought about wellness, we thought in three different categories, physical health, mental health, and financial health. We decided to bring in various local organizations that we're connected with, either through our health insurance, through the teacher's retirement system, through VOYA, which is the SSP that our teachers can participate in, as well as some other local gyms and Forest Greens for some, some healthy treats as well. Our staff members had other activities to do that day and so, they were able to walk through the Wellness Fair when they had a free moment, either during the lunchtime provided or if they had a break from their other scheduled activities they were participating in. I'm going to show you some of the organizations that participated. All right. So, broken down into the three categories, we had Body and Brain Yoga, who also did aura readings for our staff, which I think was probably one of the biggest hits of the day. There was a line quite long so that people could get their auras read. They also provided some free classes that our teachers could take for teacher appreciation, so that was nice. Our Lake Bluff Fitness Center was there and they have a special membership for educators, people who teach at the elementary or middle school. So, they had, you could sign up and get their reduced rate, which was really nice and people could find out about that as well. Bear's Fit was there. They had a couple of things to show you, BMI, some healthy eating and nutrition and all of their workout facilities that they have. Forest Green provided us with some of their yummy smoothies that we could try. And then, Pure Bar Club and Club Pilates were both there with their memberships as well. Our health insurance organization, NiHip, was there, providing people with additional information on how to access the multiple services that our health insurance provides, which really was one of the main points of the day, was to help our staff see just how much is provided through our own organizations that we have, one of which being our health insurance. In terms of mental health providers, when planning this day, I went into our health insurance to look, to see what local mental health providers were covered under our health insurance and invited them to come out so that if teachers connected with an organization, then they, of course, should always double check because health insurance always changes, but they would know that they were likely going to be covered by our own health insurance. And I did get feedback from multiple staff members that they had connected with a therapist that they really liked and were planning on setting up sessions with those therapists, which was really exciting. And then, in terms of the financial health organizations, we had VOYA, Lincoln Investment and Teachers Retirement System. Teachers Retirement System put on, they did two talks with our teachers, one for tier one staff members who began their teaching career before January 1st of 2011, and then a discussion on tier two, which is teachers who then began after January 1st, 2011. I had teachers tell me that they had been teaching for over 20 years and had never had someone from TRS come and talk to them about their retirement system. Many people reported that there were pieces that they had no idea of benefits that they were going to receive when they retired. So, a lot of positive feedback. We also had a therapist from Gray Matter Therapy do two sessions, one on trauma-informed practices for students and one on trauma-informed practices for adults for their own health and wellbeing. I think that one also received great feedback in wanting our entire staff to hear what was shared. And so, we are going to try to do something either in the first institute days or one of our professional development days next year so that our entire staff can, can hear that information. So, overall, it, I think, was a very successful day. We received really positive feedback and I think the staff made a lot of good connections. Any questions?
That's awesome, Tracy.
Yeah, that's very cool.
Thank you. It was a really great event. Yeah, it was great. And we brought in tacos, just to balance out the wellness. I forgot to mention. Trying to make sure we weren't totally on one end of the spectrum, but that kicked off our teacher appreciation week as well.
It did. And I just have to give a shout out to all of the people who helped. It was not just me coordinating this event, all of our district office staff, our maintenance crew, everybody really pitched in to help reach out to organizations, help with logistics setup, all of it. So, definitely have to give a shout out to everyone who participated in that. And then, the only other thing I wanted to do a reminder of to all of our listeners out there is that registration is open and we will have a registration event on June 1st for any families who need support in registration in terms of requiring translation in order to access the Power School registration. And so, June 1st from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the elementary school, if anybody wants to sign up for that, they can contact the elementary school and talk with Edith Barrientos.
Is that new or have we done that before?
We have done that.
Okay, that's great.
Yes.
Tracy, what if a parent has submitted registration and then now needs to make a change in that registration? Asking for a front.
You can just email in. So, I think we can, once we submit everything and roll everything over, then it's easier for us to go in and make a change. So, we might be able to go in on the backend right now. So, email registration@lb65.org. That's the registration email and then, there's multiple people who check that and each one can go in and help with that.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other registration questions?
I just thought it was really smooth this year.
It was.
It was. I agree.
Excellent. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think that's actually our last report. I don't have anything this, so, great. So, then, we'll move on to item eight, discussion presentations, and the first one is the amended budget presentation by Jay Khan.
I know you're disappointed, but I don't have a big presentation to give. Shoot. I made only a few changes. Basically, the, I added $330,000 to capital improvements. That's the portion of the summer work that's happening before June 30th that wasn't in the original budget. Putting it in the budget also gives me authority as the treasurer to transfer fund balance from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to pay for that. And then, while I was amending the budget, I also included about $475,000 of favorable revenue that is coming in ahead of forecast, so I offset the expenses with the revenue that we already have. And those are the only changes. So, that will be, that has been put on our website. We published a notice in the paper with the required amount of lead time and it will be up for approval at the June meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Jay. Any questions? Awesome, thank you. All right, moving on to Press Packet Policy 111, first read.
Sure. So, we, as you know, our policy subcommittee, which consists of Ann, Carrie, and Tim, meets with our administrative team to review Press's recommended policies. Many of the policies in this packet are five-year reviews. Some of them are legal updates. Many of them are just small tweaks. The majority of the new policies have to do with Faith's Law, which is a law or legislation to protect students from inappropriate conversation or communication grooming behaviors on the part of adults that they might interact with. And so, a lot of Faith's Law has to do with communication, hiring, reference checks and those sorts of things. So, because of that law, many other policies were impacted. So, the, the policy subcommittee is recommending all of the Press policies as drafted by Press and those are in your packet tonight to read and we will do a second discussion at our next meeting and hopefully approve.
Okay. Thanks to the policy committee. Any questions? Okay, we're flying through this. Item C is the Lake Bluff Elementary School and Middle School Furniture Proposal.
So, this one's really exciting and I'm going to turn it over to Jay in a second to give a little bit more background, but this project has been going on since prior to my arrival. A lot of input and site visits were done before COVID. Students were involved in the process prior to COVID and then, we had process prior to COVID, and then we had the pandemic, and we took a little break, and then we came back to it. A little break, just to focus on other things. And then we came back to it and revisited all of the information that was collected, all the work that was done prior to the pandemic, and then invested in some more time, site visits, team meetings, feedback loops with our architects, and with our furniture suppliers. And I think what we've come out with is a really great proposal to refresh the furniture in both buildings that haven't been refreshed in a very long time, and Jay is gonna give some more background.
I will share some of the pictures. I'll put some of the pictures of the new furniture up on the screen. These were in your board packet.
No, I think the sliders on the bottom of the furniture is, we won't need tennis balls.
Yeah, no more tennis balls.
Although you can send them a few more.
So, we've been working on this for, as Dr. Lealie said, for a long time. Really, the furniture that we have is probably similar to furniture you'd find in schools from the 1950s, or 1970s, like, it's kinda old furniture, and the way we teach in Lake Bluff is really a lot more progressive. There's a lot more individual instruction. You know, I think our strategic plan is really focused on individualized learning and engaging students and making them be excited to be in the classroom and meeting individual needs, and our furniture right now does not really allow for that. The new furniture will promote movement around the classroom, small group instruction. It's flexible. You can be regrouped and redesigned into different configurations. It's easy to move around. It has nice little sliders. It's light. Some of them have wheels, so it's really a departure from what we have. We've been working on it for a long time. The principals have been amazing. They've been working with their staff. We've gotten lots of feedback from both students and staff, because we wanted everyone to be involved and be in the purchase, and really, you know, have a stake and a say in what was provided. So, they've done a lot of work. This project has lasted a long time, because when COVID happened, we sort of, you know, everybody got, went back to sitting in classrooms in rows facing forwards. We weren't, we didn't want kids touching each other and getting into small groups, so we, and we didn't know how that was gonna go, plus financially, you know, it was very uncertain as to how much COVID was gonna cost and what things were, what was gonna happen. I think that's luckily in the rearview mirror, and I think we're getting back more towards the type of instruction that I think we would prefer, and so, this was a big project, and we also got a lot of help from our architects and from our furniture, furniture company that helped us with the middle school renovation and already has placed a lot of furniture in the building. So, you know, this is an example of the chair that we have. It's, it provides some movement, so kids who need, need to fidget or move a little, some sensory feedback, this chair provides that. We got all the same color and all the same style, so it's, looks uniform throughout the building. I think the other thing about our current furniture is we've accumulated stuff over the years, and we've just got kind of a hodgepodge of things. We don't like to throw things away. Some of that is Steve being frugal, and our teachers being frugal, and being like used to what they have, so we've got just a mix of things. Teachers also, when they don't, when we don't provide what they need for their classroom, they go out and purchase it themselves from, or bring it from home from various places. So, that is, this hopefully will avoid them having to do that. So here's, here's the example of the chair. This is the desk that we have, and so this is a very light, flexible desk. At the elementary school, they have some storage in it, like book boxes underneath, so that they can, they needed some storage at the middle school. Those are not there. But these can be configured in lots of different configurations. They have wheels on one side so they can move around the classroom, but they have glides on the other side so that they don't move, and the wheels can be locked. And they also stack very nicely, so if we have extra tables or extra desks, they won't take up the same kind of space that they do today. So, and, and those are also pretty uniform throughout the district, so we'll have a nice, clean, uniform look that is throughout the district.
And the other part to doing, streamlining the furniture is that a lot of times, if we close or open a section, we have to re-outfit a new section, and if we're pulling together from lots of different types of furniture, then some rooms wind up with all different kinds of things in there.
Yeah, some of the furniture, even though it looks the same, is different sizes. So the second-grade desks and chairs are shorter than the fifth-grade desks and chairs. And then we had some tables. This table goes up and down. There, we have some stand-up desks at the middle school. This, we were placing those. We're getting all-new teacher furniture. This, right now, we've got really large, heavy metal office desks for all of our teachers, and this is a sleeker design. It's got a side table that you can move around. That also goes up and down, so it's pretty flexible. Teachers can use it as a pedestal, or put it with their desk and work with students at it.
It should take up a lot less room.
It will take up a lot less room, and it comes with storage, so people still have a place to, to live and put their stuff. We will be getting new chairs for everybody. These will all be uniform throughout the district. Very comfortable. These are just some tables that are going in some of the special education rooms, and then we're also getting some of these hokey stools that, again, provide a lot of movement for students who need that. And we will be using these at some small group tables. We currently have a bunch of these in the middle school already. Here's just another picture of the desks, and then we've got also some small group tables, especially at the elementary school, where kids can get together and, and work as a group. There'll be a puzzle table, which is kind of a fun shape, and then there's also a, what they call a kidney table, where the teacher can meet and work in small groups. And then, we also, we have, I think the teachers would love it if the entire room was carpeted, because they love to sit on the floor and have group reading sessions. I would prefer not to have carpet all over the rooms, because it's hard to clean, and it collects dirt and things like that. So the compromise is, we've gotten these lily pads that are kind of these carts. Kids can have an individual seat, kind of it outlines where they sit, and so it gives them some boundaries versus other students, but also it's very flexible. It can move around the room and sit comfortably on the floor, and so we expect to use these a lot in our elementary grades. One of the biggest things teachers bring in from home is our comfy chairs, and rocking chairs and things like that, so we provided them this one, which is, will be uniform and is, is very comfortable for small group reading sessions. And then also, storage is a big issue at elementary, so we've gotten some storage things. These are pictured with small bins, but the bins are flexible. You can get, I think we got six-inch bins, or you can get 12-inch bins, so you can adjust the size and the number to meet your storage needs. And then, we also got some new pre-K furniture. These are just some examples of some of the play furniture that we've gotten. We'll get rid of some of the old stuff. I think there's a big, there's a very cool kitchen set in here that isn't pictured, but it's like a, like a home laundry room.
Like, it's better than my kitchen.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty cool.
If it was functioning, it would make better food.
And then there's just some, for the art room, we're getting these tables and some chairs, and then this is all the detail about, you know, everything that we've ordered. This is, the middle school is just getting this furniture. This is sort of phase one at the elementary school. We still have a few pieces to get, some kind of fun furniture and some, a little bit more storage, bookshelves and things like that, but this is most of it. The total cost, the total price tag is just under a million dollars, and so, we've been saving for this for a few years. We were expecting to do this, you know, several years ago. We do have this money in our fund balance. This will be in the budget for next year. This money was included in the long-term projections that were presented in the fall, so this is something that we've been planning on and expecting. Unfortunately, we, the lead times are still unpredictable and long, so I don't believe that we will have the classroom furniture desks and chairs by the start of school. We really wanted to be pragmatic and talk to teachers and make sure we're getting the right furniture versus rushing just to meet the deadline for the start of school, so they will come when they come, and we're, we're working on a plan to make the transition in and out. Hopefully, some of the other ancillary desks, teacher desks, and small group desks will be here and can be installed over the summer, but if not, we will, we'll work with that. And then our existing furniture will be donated to other school districts who will make good use of it.
Great.
Is there anything that we can hang on to and still use? Are we just, is everything being donated?
We are purposely trying to purge and not hang on to things. That is our, we've actually caught ourselves saying that a couple of times, and that's like the neat, our inclination is, oh, maybe we should keep this or keep that, and that's sort of why we have this mass of furniture that doesn't match right now. So we, we're gonna try to get rid of everything. We may, we'll make, we may keep some of the storage pieces or some of the pre-K furniture that are not, like, you know, that are separate, but we'll be getting rid of most everything and replacing it with new, so that it's a cohesive look, and it's functional, and...
And storage is definitely a challenge for us.
Yeah, storage is always a challenge, so we're gonna, I think, before we go out and buy a lot of storage, work on determining what we actually need to store and what we can get rid of.
So does that mean in the gym, that whole area will get cleared out of all the old desks?
Up above, yeah, all those desks, all the old stock will be gone.
And then, did you, this budget, I couldn't see labor, because will you have to put all the furniture together and...
That is included in the budget.
Oh, it is, okay.
A lot of it comes pre-assembled, but any installation, removing packaging, all that stuff is included in the price. And this is all also pre-bid, based on pre-bid contracts, so we don't have to go out to bid for this. This is pricing that's been established in the marketplace and is already compliant with all of the laws regarding that.
I think at one point, the LDA had donated, I mean, probably five years ago, some, like, some of the chairs, maybe they're outdated by now, but even those, beating a dead horse, but even, even those, we won't...
Any specialized equipment that's, you know, has a specific purpose, like if it's for special education or something like that, would not probably be included in this. I'm talking about standard classroom desks and chairs and furniture like that, not, not anything specific.
I ask this next question with some recency bias, but does this plan include any replacement for the chairs at the LBES Gym?
The folding chairs that we had...
Those were like from 1930, I think.
No, this does not. We have been talking about getting new chairs, though.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask, because we discussed it yesterday, but we had to move chairs yesterday, and they're tough.
Will there be adult chairs in the rooms in the lower level for like conferences and things like that? Because you have a teacher chair, and then you get the little guys. I didn't see any, but there are 74 pages.
Yes, I, we did not purchase those.
Get chairs for the parents.
Bring in a chair from the gym.
Just get ready to lift.
And I think what we're talking about is, right now, we have some newer chairs at the middle school that are folding chairs, and we thought about just purchasing one new set of folding chairs for one of the buildings, and having that kind of newer set, but the elementary chairs are not good.
That is a recognized need. It wasn't part of this project.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for, I mean, this is a lot of work to purchase, procure, put together, install them, and all that, so...
This was a definite, I mean, I'm gonna just, I know Jay already said it, but for our principals, this is a leadership challenge that not, not everyone anticipates is gonna be such a challenge, but to try to work with that many staff members, everyone's passionate about what they want and how they use their classrooms and what their routines are. The physical, maintaining a physical environment that is conducive for learning is a teaching standard. Like, this is a thing that teachers do to organize their time and their instruction, and this is gonna be a change for some folks. And so, I just really give a lot of credit to our principals, a lot of credit to Jay and the team for just really gathering as much feedback as possible to make the right decision for the majority, and then we'll be working together to make sure that everyone feels comfortable utilizing the new furniture. But it's gonna be great for kids.
It's exciting. We've literally been talking about new furniture since we joined the board in 2019, so it's just fun to see it come to fruition.
It'll be great.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
That'll come to the next board meeting for approval.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jay. Okay, so we'll move on to our action items for the evening. The first one is one we've been working for for a while. It's approval of the strategic plan before I ask for a motion. At least, anything you wanna, final words?
No, we're excited. We're ready to get started with our key performance indicators and strategies, getting ready to communicate it out, so as soon as it's approved, we'll get to work on those things.
Okay, and we do have the final slide deck in the packet, as well as our preferred future statements that we've previously discussed. So with that context in mind, may I have a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Laura Breakstone?
Yes.
Ann Hill?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach, yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Motion passes, and just a huge thanks again to everybody, the committee, and everybody that worked so hard on that plan, so...
We're really excited. It's great. Thank you.
Awesome. And to you, Dr. Lealie, for your, your leadership through that process, and it's one of the hardest things superintendent does, one of the most important things superintendent does.
It's important.
Next is item B, which is approval of the ESY, the Extended School Year Staffing Plan. We were presented this at the last meeting by Kathleen Turner Quoc at the elementary school, as our summer school principal, so may I have a motion to approve the ESY staffing plan as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Ann Hill?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach, yes.
Laura Breakstone?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes, motion passes as well. Item C is approval of the Allerton Hill Communications Proposal that we were presented at the last meeting. Anything to add here?
The only thing I wanna add is that I've asked them to adjust the contract to include the 30-day-out clause on both sides, and so if you're okay with approving tonight, we won't sign until we get that adjusted contract that includes that language.
Excellent.
Thank you.
The contract, as we read it, said 30 days prior to it renewing, not necessarily 30-day-out, so with that change, it'll be great. Okay, so then, given that, may I have a motion to approve the Allerton Hill Communications Proposal as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Ann Hill?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach, yes.
Yes.
Lauren Breakstone?
Yes.
Okay, that is Carrie's as well. Item D is approval of the Auditor Contract Renewal. Jay, anything to add here?
Just that the amounts have been updated for the lower pricing.
Awesome, yeah, okay. May I have a motion to approve the Auditor Contract Renewal as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Any final questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Carrie Steinbach, yes.
Laura Breakstone?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Ann Hill?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, next is the RJB Contract Extension Approval. Anything to add here? Nope. Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the RJB Contract Extension as presented by administration at the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ann Hill?
Yes.
Laura Breakstone?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach, yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes. Okay, that's approved as well. Item F, Approval of the Hazardous Routes Resolution. We had reported this at the last meeting, so may I have a motion to approve the Hazardous Routes Resolution as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? We don't need a roll call here, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes as well. Item G is the Approval of the Personnel Report, so I will read this. Personnel Report for May 23, 2023. Nonlicensed new hire, we have Juan Andrea Fuentes, position of Registrar in the District Office, effective July 1st, 2023. It's a new position at a rate of $25 an hour.
And Andrea is returning to us.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's great.
Excited.
She's awesome.
We have two licensed new hires. We have Juan Funes, a new school psychologist to the middle school, effective August 17, 2023, replacing Charlie Quick, an annual salary of $75,259, and a placement schedule MA plus 30. We have Jen Perlis Glassman with a change in position to Student Support Specialist, covering both buildings, effective August 23, 2023. It's a new position at an annual salary of $116,682. We have two FMLA requests, first one being Sarah Williams, Health and Wellness Teacher of the Middle School, effective May 1st to June 7, 2023, for health condition, and Greg Neal, ParaPro, the middle school building as well, effective May 15, 2023, also to June 7, 2023, for health conditions. So may I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report for May 23, 2023, that was just presented?
So moved.[1796.66]
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Laura Breakstone?
Yes.
Ann Hill?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
And Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item H is the Consent Agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the following, open session meeting minutes from April 4th, 2023, special meeting of the Board of Ed, April 25th, 2023, regular meeting, and May 9th, 2023, Committee of the Whole and Board Reorganization, open session, also includes the May 9th, 2023, Policy Committee Meeting Minutes. Consent Agenda includes the closed session meeting minutes from May 9th, 2023, as well as the Treasurers' Report, the Empress Report, the Bills Report, and the P Card Report. Would anyone like to have anything pulled out of the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda for May 23rd, 2023, as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.